Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the council meeting for October 7th, 2021. I'm going to ask everybody to please rise. We have to say a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and moral. Okay, take your ready. I appreciate it. Our first order of business, what we'll do is we'll, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
There, I will make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 16th meeting.
And I'll second that.
Mayor, before we do that, let me call the roll?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I have to remember this is...
The mayor, Patressella.
Present.
Councilman Torrance. Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Okay. All right, and I'll ask for that motion to move on the minutes.
I will make the motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 16th meeting.
And I'll second that.
A motion made in second. Let her call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Favor.
Councilman Torrance.
In favor.
Mayor Patressella.
In favor, thank you. All right, reports of officers of the committees. Yes, I'm going to start at the bottom of my list as I've already had a couple of questions asking. Can everybody here be okay through the mask or you want me to take it down? First, last on the list I had, I wanted to update people on the 8th Avenue paving. We were working in partnership with the Towne Colony on the 8th Avenue paving. They were running lead on it. They actually put the project out to bid on behalf of the city. They also included ADA curbing in that project. The Towne Colony has since pulled that project for their paving season for the 2021 season. They've alluded to the fact that it will be in the spring of 2022, that they'll start that once paving plans reopen, but the fact that their pricing came in substantially higher than they were anticipating, the 8th Avenue project, which we were hopeful for was going to happen in this year, has been pushed to 2022.
Joe, was the contract awarded already, though? Is it Newcastle who was doing the paving?
Newcastle, I believe, well, I, councilwoman, I can't say if the contractor, if it has been awarded. I know Newcastle is a vendor for the town.
Oh, okay.
What I'm used to seeing up there was as money freed up, they would put in additional streets as they went forward. 8th Avenue kept on getting back, pushed back, pushed back. There were design issues before because of ADA curbing. Their pricing went up. They were going to use CHIPS money. They were going to use bonding, and they kept on pushing that down the road. And unfortunately, here we are, you know, end of, middle of September, and they're afraid that once they start milling, you got a three-week window, and they're pushing it to, you know, further for next year. So they're, you're probably just as frustrated as I am because I was led last year to be, I was, you know, led to believe last year this was going to happen this year.
I know.
And then one thing, one thing, one thing, one thing.
I drive it every day, though. It's crazy bad.
Yeah.
Do we know, are they, I mean, it's up to them, but they've got like cones and a couple of like little barricades that they've got over, I don't know whether they're sewer grates or whatever it is, where there are big dips in the road? Are they going to be there all winter? Do we have any idea? I know it's Colony side, but...
Yeah, I could certainly check into that to see if they're going to do any improvements. And based on historic, what I've seen, if they know there's going to be repairs to it, they probably won't do those repairs until you see milling being done and they can shoot grades and go from there. I can see what they plan to do, but I'm assuming they're not going to come back and do it twice, you know, which...
It's really discouraging and disappointing, and it's just, you know, I guess I would have thought they would have had the money situation.
I would have thought they would have had, you know, the money to do as well, you know, with it, but I think the pricing for engineering came in higher than they anticipated. And we were just, we were putting our monies aside, you know, making sure that was going to happen. Our number went from 50,000, I think anyone that's ever heard me talk about it can attest to the fact that we heard 50,000, we heard 80,000, most recently I heard 93,000. So it's a continual, things are moving down the road. And unfortunately, we partnered with them with the belief it was going to happen. They're running lead on it because they could buy in a better quantity than we ever could. So I think that's where we're at with it. Unfortunately, as it may seem, I don't want to bypass it, but I think we tried everything we possibly can to get that thing moving forward. And there's really no, I mean, I think why the road is as bad an issue that it is because it's, we're, you know, we own it, parts of it, they own parts of it, and nobody's ever probably shared something like this before. Yeah, so they probably, it was always probably toward, and I know previously it was something we brought up once before, and it was kind of like, let's push it down, kick the can down the road, so it's good, you know?
For years.
For years.
Oh, well, oh, really, look.
It's been, I've been working on it for five years trying to get this thing done. And I think, you know, if you think about it from a town's perspective, this is not an eye-candy roadway for them. It's not one of those roads, you know, gets traveled by the people who live there. It's not one of those arterial roads, unfortunately, where you get a lot of traffic through the place.
Out of sight, out of mind, and...
Well, that's what I'm saying, councilman. You know, it could be one of those roads. The only thing that we were successful on was they were going to pay the bill, and then we were going to enter into an MOU. And with several conversations with Amanda, we finally got them to at least turn over that direct billing from the vendor to us so we could use our, our own CHIPS money directly. That's the only positive thing that came out of this entire conversation.
How do we stay on top of them to make sure that happens in the spring or put as much pressure as we can?
Well, I think one of the things, as I, you know, alluded to before we started the meeting, was there should be a letter that goes out to all residents on 8th Avenue alerting to them to the fact that, you know, we aren't going to have paved that road this year based on information that we learned from the Towne Colony. I think with that is, is we follow up that conversation with Supervisor Manan at this point in time. The only unfortunate thing is Supervisor Manan will not be there to start of 2022. That's going to be a new supervisor. So we have to stay on top and get some type of commitment from them as soon as that change happens. And I probably would suggest that as soon as that change happens, that the mayor and I go up and meet with them and put that right on the document early part of January.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you, Joe. All right, one of the other things we discussed prior to the meeting starting was the demolition at 703 7th Street. We have an executed contract with the vendor, which is Dan's Halling and Demolition. I've contacted both the neighbors on both sides of the street, asking them if we could give Dan's the direct contact so they can start working with them. We are waiting on National Grid to disconnect both electric and sewer gas, and we were over there on Monday with the chief of fire. He actually called in. They came, they actually went through and kind of did all the ordering, so now we're pushing, you know, forward with National Grid, hopefully to be on the schedule very, very soon.
Well, thank you for that. That's goodness.
Yes, that is goodness.
Do we have a cost on that?
Do we what?
Do you have a cost on that?
Yes, it was $33,300. Which is also something we can work out and read after we do the law.
It was, yeah.
Uh, let's see, we've got a gun buyback coming up Saturday. That's one of the mayor's projects that he was successful in. That's what happened between 10:00 and 2:30 this Saturday at the Dome. That's with...
10 to 1.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10 to 1.
10 to 1.
And that's with abutting municipalities. The new Ford F-750 is on site here at the City Water Elite that replaces our International, I think it's the 1999. We're getting that retrofitted with a Salter that we're able to receive from an excess inventory within the county, and we're using the current lot that we had on the International so that'll keep costs down significantly there. We have a lead line replacement that went live. It's phase two of the 9th Avenue water replacement project. The blast went out on September 30th. The eligibility period is October 1st to December 1st. Currently, there are about 15 or 18 applicants that have reached out to me. They'll be getting the application tomorrow, and that will start the process for review. Job postings. We have a job posting for a cleaner, a sanitation worker, and assessor. We are going to go through and start bringing in applicants on all three of those positions. We also have, for an assessor, we have a meeting with Green Island on Tuesday, the mayor and I, as we are sharing that service's potential. So we're hopeful that we will have all three candidates, or we'll have candidates who are all three positions by the close of next week. Code enforcement, we have four people successfully passed the test. We've canvassed all four of them, waiting for responses from those. I believe they are due to our civil service department by Friday, and at that point, we will actually go out, excuse me, we will go out and start interviewing the ones that have interest in seeking that position.
Two positions, right?
There'll be two positions, yes, two out of the four candidates. Hopefully, all four respond in the positive. Lastly, we have a, we were out at the reservoir last week. We were test-driving and operating a harvester. The city has been very interested in doing weed management control in our reservoir. We've got a reservoir that's about 500 acres, and about 176 of those are compromised by water chestnuts. Dave Dressel, councilwoman Diamond, myself, we all had a chance to drive the vehicle through the waters and actually pull some weeds. Very successful. The cost of that vehicle, under contract, will be about $73,900, which is a lot less than some of the harvesters we've been looking at, which is probably in the six-figure realm. There are a number of locations within New York State that have been using this same one dot of Florida, so we're looking to move and advance that forward and start harvesting chestnuts in the early part of next year.
What are you going to do with them after you get them out of the water?
Well, we were talking to the Towne of Gilderland. They were there watching the demonstration with us, and one of the things that they agreed to at this point, will probably have to enter into a memorandum of understanding, as soon as we pull them out of the water and we put them off to the side of the road, they will actually pick them up and bring them into their composting facility and let them go from there. So Joe, I know you thought I was kidding, but we're going to sign a P.O. tonight. We don't have a P.O. ready, mayor. But we will, we will have it, so it's tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow, when you need your... Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? That'll do it. And I know I wasn't able to attend that little demonstration, but I was, the best one is when I had the picture of Barb driving it.
It was great. It's really, it's very...
That's a video that I saved for future use.
It's a really awesome machine.
It's truly nothing but a podcat on wire. It's fantastic.
It's great.
Very simple. All right, we'll move into old business. We'll put in the budget. Sound system.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
So this is a presentation regarding the City Water Elite's interest in submitting an application for CDBG program income grant. It's for a housing rehabilitation grant for their 2021 program year. The program grant is a housing program used, basically administered by the state of New York Office of Community Renewal. It's through the HUD program. Grants are competitive throughout the interstate, so Water Elite will be competing with other municipalities, towns, and cities throughout the state. The program is up to, Joe, is that 70 million? 20 million? My goodness, I'm getting old. Yeah. It's 20 millions available for housing rehab activities throughout the state. Water Elite is proposing to apply for a $500,000 grant, which is the maximum any one municipality can receive, and the application deadline is Friday, October 29th, 2021. Our housing rehab program meets the primary health objective, which is the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities, participation for persons of low and moderate income. Right now, the City Water Elite housing objectives are to expand housing home rehabilitation throughout the city, repair safety and code violations. We're looking to assess low-to-moderate income homeowners and improve deteriorating residential neighborhoods throughout the state.
Get closer, Dave.
Unbelievable. I almost can't see this. They can't read it either. Currently, the grants provide a maximum of $25,000 in funding.
Sorry, this is a bit timed right now.
$25,000 in funding for each low-to-moderate income qualified homeowner. This repairs their homes and property and complies with, gets them into compliance with New York State Building Code, helps weather rise and make their homes more energy efficient. Rehab work examples of repair include roof repair, chimney repair, new furnaces and heating repair, insulation and weatherization of the home, plumbing and electrical, and foundation and exterior wall work. Sorry. Currently, the city has a waiting list of over 60 homeowners who are interested in participating in the program. 89% of the homes in the City Water Elite were built before 1970 and are over 50 years old, and many are in need of minor to major repairs. 55.89% of our population is low to moderate income and eligible for this grant program. If you have questions regarding these programs, we ask that you please contact 270-3800. It's actually extension 115. And if your civic group or organization is interested in developing programs beneficial to low to moderate income persons in the community of Water Elite, please contact our Department of Planning, and we'll provide you with technical help and answer any questions that you may have.
Ask no questions?
Sure.
So who identifies, I mean, 80 people that have sent in applications to the city? Who decides, first of all, how that money is dispersed?
Well, they haven't sent in applications yet. They've just advised us that they're interested in the program.
Okay.
When the, when we apply for the grant, if we are successful, once we get all through the steps that New York State requires us, we will send out notices, and then it'll be on a first-come, first-served basis.
All right.
And then there's a Citizens Advisory Committee, which is appointed by the mayor, and then they will approve or deny based on the, you know, income and the...
And the grant doesn't have to be for a full 500,000. If that's what we requested, the grant would be any number between 0 and 500,000, right?
It could be. Most likely, the last grant we've seen was 500,000, and we were able to help, I believe it was 23 homes.
That's very... And it's first, and it's not what we identify as the ones that are in most in need. It's first-come, first-served?
It's completed application, first in the door is first considered. Like I said, it's approved by the Citizens Advisory.
All right.
Is there a cap on, in that of money a homeowner can get?
It's up to 25,000.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed that if you said.
No, that's okay. And if we just, if we determine that there is additional work that needs to be done, we have worked with outside communities. The Albany County Rural Housing Alliance has been invaluable to us, and we worked with them, and they've worked with us to provide additional funding, which is allowable under the program.
Okay.
You know, unfortunately, there have been a couple of instances where we've gone in, and there was just too much work to be done with this program. If you put hammer to nail, you have to take care of everything. If it's identified that it's over the 25,000, and we can't get additional help, then we keep them on the list, and we look for additional help as we move forward.
All right.
Okay.
And it's a grant, they don't have to pay it back?
Correct. It is a 100% grant.
Yeah.
Unless they sell the house.
Great.
It is a 100% grant, and it is, there is a lien placed on the property for five years. That lien depreciates 20% every year, and then after the fifth year, if they sell the house, they go home. And if they do sell the house within that five-year time period, that money comes back into the city, and then it's repurposed through the CDBG program for these expenses.
No, no, it's not. It comes back to the city, and the city, after, if we haven't received $35,000 in revenue, it is the city's general fund revenue. It is, it does not go back to the CDBG project.
Okay.
We have it this year. That's what I know.
That's what I know. You guys fight that out on your own. Sounds good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We have a presentation now for the 2022 water and sewer budget. Is that for you, Amanda, or...
Sure. As the council knows, and perhaps some of you know, we've had a water and sewer budget workshop previously, where we went line through line through the entire budget. Now we're just kind of giving a broad picture for the, for everyone who missed that. Our water revenues are essentially staying pretty much the same. You'll, you'll see this theme throughout the presentation. We have metered water from our commercial businesses within the, in the city. We meter water that is from the arsenal. Then there's the unmetered water, which is the residents of the city. We also sell raw water to Gilderland. We have interest on those bills if they're not paid on time. And then we also sell power to National Grid. We have a hydro facility where our dam is in Gilderland, and we sell power to them. Excellent. So, sorry, you're going to see that revenues were just increasing them about $5,000 to 3.12 million. For expenditures, here you see each of the particular classifications. Our admin costs went from 1.158 million to 1.225 million. Most of that has to do with raises of individuals that are in that particular line, as well as attorney fees for, we're currently arguing our assessment with Gilderland for the property that we have out there, and we just increased the amount that we're budgeting for that for next year. General costs went from 188,000 to 251,000. Most of that is liability insurance cost that's going up, and we really don't have any control over that. Our pump station went from about 45,000 to about 78,000. Again, actually, no, that's not employees. We, if, for whatever reason, our hydro is not working, which we've been having some difficulty with it lately, we have to pay for power out there to get water from Gilderland to the City of Water Elite. And as you can imagine, it could be quite costly. So if our pumps, if the hydro is not working, then we have to pay for power, so we are budgeting higher costs for that. Our filter plant went from about 444,000 to 472. Again, this is where we have employees. We also use various chemicals to make sure that the water is drinkable. Not sure that's a word, but... And we have contracts with our chemical companies that, that increased, I think, 2% from 21 to 22. Distribution, we went from about 61,000 to about 82,000. We're looking to purchase a leak detection system. Then insurances are going from 695,000 to 483,000. We're seeing a big decrease there because the city went self-insured for workers' comp, so our workers' comp costs have gone down significantly. Last is our debt service. It's going up a bit. We are starting to do some work for our filter plant, so that's going up just a little bit. It's going to go up, projected to go up quite a bit more in '23 when we really get those projects going on. So, bottom line, no rate increase for 2022 water. We're going to continue with our reservoir maintenance plan. As we've just discussed, we're looking to invest in a water-chestnut harvester, and we're also looking to improve the reservoir security. Another big item is complete our hydro relicensing. We have to continue to negotiate with the DEC to complete the FERC relicensing, and that will force us to make some repairs to the reservoir that may not have been something that we were originally going to do. Excellent. Onto the sewer budget. Again, you're going to see a whole lot of the same. In fact, everything on this slide is the same. Same metered waters, or same metered sewers, same unmetered sewer, arsenal, colony, and interest, all staying the same, projected for 2022. Next slide, please. Onto expenses. Really, the big change here is admin and maintenance. You're going to see an increase to employee costs, which not only includes salaries, it includes retirement, FICA, and Medicare. So that went up a bit, and maintenance, or payments to Albany County for cleaning our sewer waste went down slightly. So again, you're going to see, next slide, please, no rate increase for the sewer fund for 2022, and we're going to continue to expand services where needed, and we're looking at doing a CSO separation project in the coming year. Last slide. There is a typo. It says October 21st, 2020. It should say October 21st, 2021. My fault. So our next steps are calling for a public hearing, which will be at the next meeting, where anyone who wants to voice their opinion on our water and sewer budgets can come on down, and we will hear, hear you out. Also, at that meeting, there will be a vote, a reading and a vote on the local law for the sewer and ordinance for the water.
Can I ask about the assessment?
Yes.
With Gilderland?
Yep. I don't have an answer, but sure.
That's okay. Is that money put into escrow, or is that bill paid?
It's paid.
It's paid, right? It's not put into escrow while you're, while the fight is going on?
Unfortunately, not.
All right. And that indicates such on, on... And that indicates such on here, right, somewhere?
Yeah. It's in the admin costs for the water department. It went up, I think, $300,000 three years ago.
I didn't know what, yeah, okay. I didn't know if it was paid or if it was just set aside, but it's paid.
Unfortunately, it's paid. They have it, they get an accrue interest on it.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, okay. Good, thank you.
What did you just say?
They get an interest on it. We don't.
Oh, income interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, income.
Yeah.
But that's all part of the settlement.
I don't think it is. I don't think we're allowed to charge interest.
Yeah, yeah.
We can?
I'm sorry.
The matter, just so you know, the matter is currently scheduled to go to trial in early 2022. However, the way the trials work is not like a car accident where you get a verdict that day. It could be up to a year or eighteen months before you actually get a decision. There's one judge assigned really to all the tax cert cases and that's how long it takes to get a decision. In the end, however, if the city does prevail or if the assessment is reduced, the amount paid will be refunded and there will be interest on that.
Okay.
Yeah, there is an interest.
Is that a...
It's like a penalty.
Which judge does it?
Judge Walsh.
It's a, what's it?
Judge Walsh is the...
No, it's a something.
It's not at the, so most judgments accrue interest at 9%.
Yeah.
Tax cert cases do not. I think it runs in the 2% range.
Okay.
Okay. Amanda, thank you.
Yep.
The both departments, or water and sewer departments, have done an excellent job of keeping the cost on track despite some of the other problems and issues we have and some developments that we want to try and improve on. I think it's good. They did an excellent job. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Your Honor, the first order of new business is ordinance number 2050. This is an ordinance of the City of Water League, New York, amending section 260-30, subsection C, sign locations of this code of the City of Water League. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on ordinance number 2050.
And I will second it.
Yeah. This house that's requesting that is at five ball place. This has gone through the review of the Police Department. A favorable recommendation is, been granted to us by the Police Department and is here for the approval tonight. Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Diamond?
In favor.
Councilman Torrancela?
In favor.
Mayor Patrasella?
In favor.
The next order of business is local law number four of the year 2021, and this is introduction of a local law adopted pursuant to cannabis law 131, opting out of onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the City of Water League.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on local law number four?
So just an introduction, you won't make a motion to move on it. I'll just give you a quick rundown of where things stand. So as we've talked about before, if you do not opt out, then you are automatically opted in when it comes to the sales of marijuana products within the city and also onsite consumption. So previously, at previous meetings, there have been discussions regarding the possibility of opting out when it comes to onsite consumption. I have prepared the local laws, local law number four of 2021. It's in front of each of you and was also provided earlier with the agenda. So if we're going to proceed along those lines, you need to have a public hearing at the next meeting, it'll be scheduled for the 28th, and then you can act upon it after that public hearing on the 28th.
On the 21st?
First.
21st.
Right, 21st. Okay. The 21st would be the public hearing, you would act on it at the following meeting, after the 21st or that day?
You could act on it on the 21st or you could act on it later. We're getting very close to the timeframes though, so my hope would be you act upon it on the 21st.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
And this is basically, just to make it clear, this is not opting out of the sales, opting out of the onsite consumption. So it's a smoking poller type of that part of the law.
That's correct. Onsite consumption only.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Resolution number 9838 is a resolution requesting that the tree committee consider, investigate, make findings, report, and make a recommendation regarding the removal in whole or in part of a tree located at 603 First Avenue in the City of Water League.
First Street.
First Street. Yeah, they made a change in that. Sorry about that.
603 First Street.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we move on resolution number 9838.
And I will second it.
So I'll take that one, I guess. So your city code provides that the council has the authority to ask the tree committee to conduct an investigation regarding the safety hazard connected with any street, you can treat, located within the city. So by passing this resolution, you would be authorizing the committee to take a look at that particular tree, at that particular location, report back to the council regarding it, make its recommendations, and then the council would act from that point forward. Obviously, if the committee's recommendation is the tree is fine, then I assume it would stay, but they can also make recommendations as to whether it should be removed in its entirety or holding part.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Diamond?
In favor.
Councilman Torrancela?
In favor.
Mayor Patrasella?
In favor.
Resolution number 9839 is a resolution awarding a contract for paving and related work at the corner of Broadway and First Street to Louiezy Brothers Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we move on resolution number 9839.
I'll second that.
So in the early part of this year, latter part of February, we were notified by the resident of 18 First Street that there was probably an improper installation of paving about three, maybe four years ago on the Broadway, First Street areas, which resulted in flooding into basements, dampness, ponding. We started looking at that. We had our engineer, Weston and Sampson, come out. We had videos, we had pictures to show them the ponding and so on. And then as I sent you the pictures last night, we came up with a schematic on what the proper alternative would be to shed water away from the area of ponding. Instead of limiting ourselves with catch basins and having only certain volumes, the thought process is to create a swell in the pavement area that will allow water to shed continuously and not be restricted by volume. So Weston and Sampson got this information back to us in the early part of June. We shortly after that went out to bid with contractors. We got a contract or a quote from Louiezy, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week, that's for $24,000 to do those repairs, take down a tree, redo the grave, and seed and go from there. So that work could commence probably shortly after the approval of this resolution. We'll contract or contact the vendor and get onto their schedule shortly thereafter.
Okay. Good.
That'll be five less calls a week.
What are you going to do?
I don't know. I don't know. Put all that spare time. Okay, all right.
Can they take down a tree without approval of the council? I'm asking...
That's a different...
I know.
All right. If any other questions, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Diamond?
In favor.
Councilman Torrancela?
In favor.
Mayor Patrasella?
Oh, gee. We are hard to guess. In favor, please.
And your mayor concludes the legislation to be voted on for this evening's agenda.
Okay. Do you have any? The only thing we have left here is scheduling, calling the public hearing, we spoke of cannabis law and water and sewer for our executing, so we'll call on those for October 21st just to get that recorded.
Anything to discuss on this final discussion item? Or no?
Well, should we talk about the CSA, the residency issue? It's been something that's been discussed at, you know, our negotiations, but we have a couple of positions out there, you know, sanitary and cleaner positions, you know, where we hold it up, you know, to get qualified people who took it through to the county. So, you know, we're looking at the best qualified people, I guess.
So there was a very slight, small, or short conversation with the CSA unit regarding the residency requirement. In the end, CSA does not take a position on it, doesn't support removing it, doesn't support having it remain. As advised us, it's simply up to the council to determine what they want to do regarding the residency requirement.
Okay. We'll discuss that later, Dave.
Yeah. Well, first, I think what you need to do is interview.
Yes.
Right. That's correct. Okay. All right. Anything under appropriations in account? I think we have enough of that.
Yeah, we have enough of that.
I don't know if this is the right venue to bring this up necessarily. I was informed that the supervisor for the DPW is not going to be able to make the originally scheduled...
Presentation?
Hearing, workshop.
Workshop, okay.
So we need to reschedule that.
Well, we can handle what other, right? I mean, you've already gone over all the conversations, right?
Not that particular one, no.
Have you...
DPW.
Yeah, with DPW.
Yeah.
That will be, that's supposed to be the November 4th meeting.
Correct.
So I haven't had any discussions with that yet.
So we'll have conversations.
Provide us with the documents, I think, right?
Yeah, I think we...
And then if we have any particular questions, you can answer them, right? Well, you know...
Sure. Yeah, we need to reschedule.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else, I guess, so we got to move forward on it. We can do that. Just another item that, just announcing, I know that you mentioned the tree committee and they have a memorial tree program going on now and they've put out for, let's say, publication that we can, anybody can memorialize a tree or purchase a tree and donate $150 for that tree and it'll have a plaque on it, you know, for that, you know, individual and that person. Right now, I think out of the 47, I believe they have, I think they have 23 of them already committed within, it was only within the first week. So they've done very well on that. So, and I believe there's been a couple of articles on it and stuff, but the tree committee's been very, very active on taking care of these issues and promoting the trees in the city.
Great.
Okay. Anything else? We'll move into public comment period?
At this time, the mayor and the council have opened up a public comment period. We ask that if you do wish to address the council, that you step forward to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes to address the council with any items you so choose.
Just press that button. You shouldn't get any static from that. Is there a red light on there? Red light, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm Bob Lewis. My mom lives at 18 First Street. There's an issue you know about. I was wondering, what tree are you guys talking about, my neighbor's, her neighbor?
No, the tree, the tree we're talking about is on the city's, it's actually a sub-street that was there.
Oh, you mean beyond that?
Yeah, so the water's going to be flowing, which is going to go right down to that little riverway.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, obviously, like that.
Yeah, there's going to be a tree in the way that's going to be, to get that grade and get that...
Yeah, in other words, they're going to regrade it and they're going to, they're going to put like a drain to continue on or they're just going to...
They're just coming with a swell to allow water to continuously flow.
Yeah, because I know years ago, it used to be all dug out, it used to run naturally, there was a pitch there going in the driveway.
That's exactly what we're going to try to go back to when we were out there with the engineers.
Okay.
We have video, well, I have video and that's what we're using from the engineers to show where the water was shedding on the streets. So with that, we determined what the pitch was and what the grade needed to be in order to keep that continuous flow.
Yeah, because what ways up to those that...
Yes.
Yeah. It used to be a drain on the other side, too, came around the other turn.
Yeah, well, it seems like the water, there's crowning in that road that they have, which seems to be a little bit higher than anticipated.
Yeah, a lot of dirt.
Yeah, and it's just not getting there, so this we'll take care of.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, I think we got to get to the system.
I think the speaker shouldn't be pointing at the microphone.
That's true.
Point it. Point it.
Tell me one.
I don't think you need to put the microphone up here.
God, my head, 1921, 87. I was on the Water League's new website, nice document, really nice. One thing is missing, city code.
Okay.
Can't go to the library and read it because they don't have a copy of it.
City code isn't on there yet?
City code is not on the news.
It will be on there tomorrow.
Thank you.
Should be. Should be, yeah. It was one of the first things.
Yeah.
You know you can go to ECO to find it, though, right?
Yeah, sure.
No.
No, it shouldn't.
Yes, I've been on ECO.
Okay.
I know that. The residents who...
And it should be easier to search, too. I mean, so again, that was a good feature about us, was the searching. If there are no other further comments, I'll close the public hearing. And then if there's something else we wrote in front of the council, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Favor.
Councilman Torrancela?
In favor.
Mayor Patrasella?
In favor. Was there something you wanted to say?
Good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody, for coming. I'll see you at the next meeting, which will be October 21st. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you.